Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I would like to call this special school board meeting of September 5th, two thousand seventeen, to order. The time is five oh five P M. The purpose of today's meeting is to hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final millage rates, and also the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final budget. At this time, we request that all cellular phones be turned off, or be put into the silent mode. I would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or hers, her highest personal potential, and also of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. Today's agenda includes presentation on, the percentage of increase over the rollback rate, proposed millages, budget overview, proposed final budget, public hearing on the final budget, and adoption of the required local effort millage, basic discretionary millage, capital outlay millage, a resolution determining revenues and millages, and fiscal year eighteen final budget and related resolution adopting the final budget. Also, there will be comments from board members superintendent and board attorney. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Cuckel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Toiber. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. I am, I will now turn this meeting over to Dr. Atkins, Superintendent of Schools, and Dr. Amy Decimore, Chief Financial Officer, and Kelly Letcher. Dr. Atkins?
Good evening, and thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and just turn it right over to Dr. Decimore, who will take us through the budget agenda.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, and members of the board. This hearing is the second of two public hearings required under Florida statutes to provide the public an opportunity to give input into the proposed millage levy and the budget for this fiscal year. The superintendent presented his proposed tentative budget to the board on July twentieth, and the tentative hearing that we had in July was advertised in the news press on Friday, July twenty first. The first public hearing was held on July twenty fifth to discuss and adopt the tentative millages and the tentative budget. On Tuesday, August twenty ninth, you received the final, the information for our final budget for two thousand seventeen eighteen, and this second and final public hearing that we're having today was noticed through a direct mailing through the property appraiser's office, and that mail document is known as the TRIM, or the Truth in Millage document. That being said, we want to go into the information about the budget and the millages or tax rates for this fiscal year.
As outlined by TRIM requirements... Is that on? Can you hear me? No? Okay. How's that? Okay. As outlined by TRIM requirements, we first need to discuss the millage rollback rate. And basically, the rollback rate is the millage, when applied to the current year's tax roll, net the adjustments of new growth, would produce the same dollars as received in the previous year. The calculated rollback rate for this year is six point five seven nine two mils. We're actually levying six point six seven nine mils, which is an increase of one point five two percent over the rollback rate. It's, I want to point out, too, that the required local effort is sixty-six percent of that total millage rate, which is required to be done. You have no option in that. The proposed millage rate is a decrease of point three one oh mils from our two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen millage rate of six point nine eight nine mils.
When you look at the history of the tax roll for, over the past several years, you see what our, what our trend has been since two thousand six. This is the fifth year in a row that our tax roll has increased, so that is a good indicator of our economy, and that our tax roll continues to increase. That also is reflected within our capital plan as well, and we'll go into that in a little bit of detail in just a moment. But this is our, our tax roll history, so a good indication of trend. It has increased a little over eight percent for this fiscal year. And so, we'll go on to the next one, which means what is that effect on taxpayers? In terms of that tax roll, of course, the effect of the, your, your value in any given property will be different from property to property. However, what we have here is a little indication of two different scenarios. Either your property value increased three percent, which is the limit under Save Our Homes, or your property value increased eight point one percent, which is the increase in the tax roll for this year. Anyone's personal property value could have increased or decreased anywhere on any spectrum, but these are a couple averages that we may see. So as you see, with someone with a two hundred thousand dollar value from last year, if their property value increased eight point one percent, they are looking at a new tax, property tax value of two hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. So they would be seeing an increase in their property taxes, just based on school district taxes of about forty-six dollars and nineteen cents. However, for those people who might have only increased three percent under Save Our Homes, those people will actually be seeing tax decreases, because the tax rate did not increase at the same percentage as their property value. So they will actually see that tax decrease as far as school district taxes for this fiscal year. So again, the impacts could be very different depending on what your personal circumstance is, but a couple of circumstances of what that could look like as far as that tax value increase.
So the millages are made up of three pieces. Of course, the required local effort piece, which you are required to do, and that is going to generate about three hundred and forty-eight million, six hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. The basic discretionary, which is the point seven four eight, will generate about fifty-eight million dollars, and the capital's going to generate about a hundred and eighteen million this year for a total millage of five hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars, which is about sixteen point eight million more than we received last year from the taxes. Our final budget that we're recommending tonight is a total of one billion, five hundred and eight million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars, and it's made up of the different pieces. So I'm going to go through each piece. It's made up of the general fund, which is the basic operating piece for, that, you know, that runs our schools and stuff, the debt service that we use to pay our debt, capital that we use to build new schools, to buy equipment, provide maintenance, and do renovations. We have the food service fund, which provides breakfast and lunch for all of our students. Our special revenue funds are the funds generated in grants and things like that, and that will go up and down throughout the year depending when the grants come in. Our internal service accounts, those are our self-insurance health funds and our workers' comp.
All right. So when we look at just a couple of facts from our general fund, of course, which is our major source of revenue for the district's daily operations, it is currently for the final budget at eight hundred and seventy-five point five million dollars, and that represents the lion's share, fifty-eight percent of our total budget. If we look at how some of those numbers lay out, we have had a lot of conversation about what happened within the F E F P for this fiscal year, an increase of about one point three eight percent per pupil, at seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars per F T E. So we are hoping that we will be seeing something different and better than that next year, but that's where we were for this year. Of that amount, forty-one percent of those funds actually comes from the state coffers. So fifty-nine percent of our funding in the general fund will be coming from, or through the F E F P, I should say, will be coming from our local sources, which is our property taxes, forty-one percent coming from the state. We had a little conversation about that earlier today, and so the average across the state, when we look at the total F E F P numbers, looks at about, like about fifty-five percent that comes from the state level, that comes from the local level, as opposed to our fifty-eight percent. So we do provide a higher level of funding from our state, from our local sources, than do other counties within the state.
So this is just a representation, and you can see that fifty-eight point eight percent of the funding is from local, forty point six one is state, and point five nine is from federal. So where do those dollars go? Well, seventy-two percent of those dollars go directly into instruction and direct school expenses. Our food service budget makes up about seventy point two million dollars. That includes breakfast for every child at no cost to parents. The lunch prices are remaining the same in two thousand seventeen, and our community eligibility program remains in effect, and one school is being added this year. The special revenue, it's currently budgeted eighty-five point three million, and that's our, mainly our Title I, our I D E A, and other federal grants that come in, and those will increase as we move throughout the year.
As we look at our capital funds, which in the final budget is at two hundred and eighty-eight point five million dollars, as we've talked through quite a bit, our local property tax is basically the sole source of substantial revenue that we have within that fund. And then, of course, for this fiscal year, we have a new requirement on that funding source to share some of that with charter schools. We do have seven new schools built into the five-year plan in our capital plan, and we do have a plan to take on debt for those new schools absent any additional funding source. We will be having a briefing later on down the line specifically related to capital to go into more details about what that plan would look like. But with our debt service funds, our payments in our final budget right now are budgeted at fifty-nine million dollars per year. That, that will, that includes the additional payments that we are planning on adding for our high school M M M, as well as the additional debt that we took on for high school L L L as well. Our statutory debt service capacity, we are at fifty-one percent of that, or that is, we are allowed to go up to seventy-five percent of our one point five mil funds, and we are just at over half of those. When we look at just half of our two, one point five mil funds, we are at seventy-six point seven percent of that limitation. And our reserves, of course, are set aside in order to protect the district's financial position. It is, you know, part of our fiscal responsibility to make sure we, as a district and as a board, are planning well and making sure that we have appropriate reserves set aside in the case of any emergencies. Our contingency and board priorities represent five point five percent of new revenue, and keep in mind, that is just in the general fund. We do have reserves as well set aside in the capital funds, which would be used, of course, in case of an emergency, like one that we might have coming up shortly, and those revenues at the end of five years are right now set at about eight and a half percent of revenue within that plan.
So next, I'm going to talk about the growth incremental, which we started last year. It's, that's taking the point seven four eight discretionary millage, and taking the piece that's above what was earned last year, and putting and transferring it to the capital fund, to use it for capital resources. As you know, the, sorry, the discretionary millage, along with the capital, are the only two that we really have growth in. The required local effort is offset by state dollars. This year, we're looking at four point four one five to transfer over. There's some risk with doing this. It does reduce the dollars that we expected to receive from the F E F P, because it is built into the F E F P. We also share a proportion, a portion of that with the charter schools, so that is not taken into account when we do the, the transfer piece. And prolonged use of this will affect the general fund. The benefits are, is, uh-huh?
I was just going to ask, when, when do we anticipate having a conversation about whether we want to continue to do this, given the impact it's having on operating, and the, the small impact it's having on capital?
Well, I think it's, I think it's something that we should be discussing at an annual basis.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks. And the benefit is, of course, it helps in our capital, where we are seeing a high need right now, and the initiatives with these dollars are looking at operational efficiencies, using the dollars for operational efficiencies.
So our school district budget, of course, supports all of our schools, and all of our estimated over ninety-two thousand students that will be attending our district this year, really is over ninety-three thousand at this point. It supports the initiatives of our state, as well as our district's vision and mission, and centered around the, aligned with, and centered around the initiatives envisioned twenty twenty. So we submit this budget to you on behalf of, of course, our superintendent, the students and the employees of Lee County Schools, and of course, the citizens in our community, and the action that the superintendent has asked for you all to take tonight would be to adopt all proposed millages for the two thousand eighteen budget year, as well as the final budget for this fiscal year, and all related resolutions.
Thank you, Dr. Decimore, and, and Ms. Letcher. Dr. Atkins, at this time, I would ask that you present your recommendations for this evening's public hearings.
Thank you. The first recommendation, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final proposed required local effort millage of four point four three one mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of three hundred and forty-eight million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand and eighty dollars. The required local effort millage includes basic R L E of four point four one three, and a prior period adjustment millage of point zero one eight. Next recommendation, I recommend the Lee County School Board adopt the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final proposed basic discretionary millage of point seven four eight mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of fifty-eight million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. Next recommendation is I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final proposed capital outlay millage of one point five zero zero, with a proposed amount to be raised of a hundred and eighteen million, forty-two thousand, four dollars. Total millage will equal six point six seven nine mils, with a total amount to be raised of five hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty-five million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of one point five two percent. Next recommendation, I recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the final millage rates for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Next recommendation, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the final budget and related resolution adopting the final budget for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year as follows. General operating, eight hundred and seventy-five million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Special revenue budget of a hundred and fifty-five million, four hundred, five hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars. Debt service budget of fifty-nine million, fifteen thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars. Capital outlay budget of two hundred and eighty-eight million, five hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Internal service budget, one hundred and thirty million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, for a total final budget of one billion, five hundred and eight million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. We will now recess the special school board meeting, and open the public hearing to consider adoption of the final millage rates and final budget for two thousand seventeen, eighteen. At this time, the public will be invited to speak on these matters. The time allowed for comment is three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone in the right section of the auditorium who wishes to speak? And anyone in the left section? Mr. Castellano, please approach the podium.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins. Board members, Mark Castellano, President of the Teachers Association of Lee County. This is really just a question to put out to Amy and Kelly, and then for you guys to consider. I'm just curious if any consideration has been given to what happens if seventy-sixty-nine is put on hold by the courts, and the implications on the budget, if that does occur? It's just a question I'm going to throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Castellano. Dr. Decimore, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, I can. There are a couple areas where seventy-sixty-nine specifically impacts the budget as, and how we have things budgeted right now. The first, the, the largest one probably would be the transfer of those capital dollars from, for, from our one point five mils to charter schools, and that one has about a six million dollar impact for us, based on the charter schools that we know of now that would be eligible for that transfer. We have that as an expense that's budgeted on our capital plan right now. If seventy-sixty-nine gets put on hold, and we don't have to do that, then it, of course, would stay within our coffers. The question would be, you know, what we have to do with that? I would imagine that we'd have to keep those dollars in escrow, so to speak, until, you know, a decision was made on whether we would be moving forward or not. So we would be kind of segregating those and holding those in reserve, waiting for a decision. The, the second place where we have a pretty large impact on the budget would be how Title I dollars are now distributed. As far as the impact of the budget, though, we, we're pretty much set on that for this year. We decided on a Title I allocation based on the rules of seventy-sixty-nine. We would not go back and change that if the lawsuit goes on hold, because schools have already gotten their Title I plans in place. We've had, made those decisions. So if there's any change to that, it would really be an impact in the two thousand nineteen budget, and not this current year's budget. The third, and much smaller, impact would be in seventy-sixty-nine, it calls for a removal of the cap on A P, I B, Cape, and ACE bonuses. And so if, if that cap is removed, then of course, we're ready to deal with that in this year's budget. It's about, I think about a hundred thousand dollar impact, if I remember correctly, based on what our bonuses have been in the past. If they decide to put that on hold, then of course, we will adhere to the rules as we know them to be today, with a two or three thousand dollar cap on bonuses, based on what our current laws and regulations are. So that's kind of a summary of what seventy-sixty-nine's impact or putting on hold would do for us.
Thank you, Dr. Decimore. Okay, Mr. Castellano. Thank you. Okay. I will now close this public hearing, and reconvene the special school board meeting of September fifth, two thousand seventeen. The board will now consider each of the superintendent's recommendations. Dr. Atkins, please restate your recommendations individually, allowing the board the opportunity to vote before moving on to the next one.
Hey, yes, ma'am, will do. Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final proposed required local effort millage of four point four three one mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of three hundred and forty-eight million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand and eighty dollars. The R L E millage includes the basic R L E of four point four one three, and the prior period adjustment millage of point zero one eight.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. LaRiviere.
Support.
Supported by Dr. Cuckel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven oh.
Next recommendation, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final proposed basic discretionary millage of point seven four eight mils, with a proposed amount to be raised of fifty-eight million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Viviere, and seconded by Dr. Cuckel. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Dr. Atkins?
Next recommendation, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen final proposed capital outlay millage of one point five zero zero, with a proposed amount to be raised of a hundred and eighteen million, forty-two thousand and four dollars. The total millage will equal the six point six seven nine mils, with a total amount to be raised of five hundred and twenty-five million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars. The total millage rate to be levied exceeds the rollback rate. It is an increase in the rollback rate of one point five two percent.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Toiber. Seconded by Mrs. Patrica. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Number four.
Next recommendation, recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the resolution determining revenues and millages levied, and the resolution adopting the final millage rates for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Board members, you've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
By Mrs. Patrica, seconded by Mr. Toiber. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Final recommendation, Dr. Atkins?
Recommend that the Lee County School Board adopt the final budget and related resolution adopting the final budget for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year as follows. General operating, eight hundred and seventy-five million, five hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and twelve. Special revenue budget, one hundred and fifty-five million, five hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-nine. Debt service budget, fifty-nine million, fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-two. Capital. Capital outlay budget, two hundred and eighty-eight million, five hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty. Internal service budget, one hundred and thirty million, one hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety for a total final budget of one billion, five hundred and eight million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved by Mrs. Giannelli, and seconded by Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Okay. We have just passed the budget. I have a question for Dr. Decemore. How does this total budget compare with the total budget of the last several years?
Yes, okay. So with the comparison of the total budget over the last several years, this is, this budget is an increase, I believe, of a little over one percent over last year's final total budget, but I'm looking for, hold on my page in the budget book, that will give a little history of that because I know we have that. Yeah, well, typically, okay, so we're given, usually we give that comparison of the final from last year to the approval of this year. But this year's total budget, final budget is one point five million. If I remember correctly, from 2017, the total final was, I believe, one point three, close to one point four billion, I think it was one point three nine, if I'm not mistaken. So it's up a little over one percent from our previous year.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. Now we have board members' comments. Mrs. Morgan. Dr. Cuckel. Mrs. LaRiviere.
I just would like to go back to the question, if I may, the question that I had asked at the briefing meeting with regard to our, are we still giving fifteen percent of our property taxes towards other counties? We had been in eighty-five fifteen, so I'm curious if that is still our status.
So the status of that, I think the eighty-five fifteen that you're referring to is either how much of the, of the base FEFP is state versus local?
Right.
So of our base FEFP, about eighty-three percent of that is local and seventeen percent of that is state. So it's gone, you know, we have a little bit of a, we're, we're still very high in terms of the amount that we're doing at, you know, at the local level versus the state level. Now, that is of the base FEFP, and then of the total FEFP, state versus local, that is our fifty-nine percent at the local level versus forty-one percent at the state.
I'm sorry, let me clarify.
Okay.
What I'm asking the question has to do with our property taxes.
Right.
And the percentage that we receive back as a county for our schools. Some districts get one hundred percent of that back. We have been one of those districts that we did not get at all back, and we donated to the other districts that needed the funding. Are we still at that? Do you know, do you know the percentage that we are currently receiving back?
Well, no, okay, so then, so let me clarify, and I'm hoping that I'm understanding your question correctly. When we levy property taxes locally, we do receive all of those funds, right? The question is, of the total FEFP, because that, that's a mix of federal, of state versus local, how much state dollars are we tapping into versus how many local dol, how much of our local dollars really is usurping, so to speak, the dollars that we would be getting from the state? So when we look at that cut or that percentage, we are higher in terms of the percentage of dollars that our local, our local sources fund versus our state funds. We are at about fifty-nine percent of our total FEFP that is being funded at the, you know, by our local funds versus, on a state average, about fifty-five percent on a state average. So I hope I'm answering your question as you're asking it.
Steve, do you? Okay, Mr. Toyber, I'm sorry. I'm...
I, I, I think what you're saying is, you're, you're saying you believe that of the local taxes, of the local property taxes that we collect, maybe we don't keep all of them.
Yes.
And, and to my knowledge, that's not, that's not the case. We will keep all of the local dollars that we collect. The question is, since we collect more local dollars, are we really collecting less state dollars than maybe other districts around the state are collecting? And the answer to that is yes, because we can generate more dollars locally because we're property value-rich as opposed to some of the other counties around the state.
So, so what happens? You know, basically, you know, the state of Florida is going to set kind of a minimal funding threshold for a student, and then you look at how much are you expected to require to, to, your local effort, what is that expected to be versus the local effort of other districts? And, and because of our property values, we have a, a higher burden here locally than we may have than other districts may have.
Other districts have.
Possibly some of our districts to the east of us, you know, would not have, they would, they would receive more of their dollars from the state, a higher percentage than we would here in Lee County. Collier County, on the other hand, you know, receives, you know, more from the local dollar. Now, the, the way that, and Dr. Decemore is going to explain this, but the DCD does give them a little bit of a funding advantage because of the way it allocates the dollars they're allowed to keep, a little bit more than, in some districts. So they have a, they have a distinct advantage when it comes to, you know, how much they can pay their staff and, et cetera. So...
All right. So we are still, we are still at that point thing, considered a donor?
Uh-huh, yes. Yes, 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 we are.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes, we are.
Anything else, Mrs. LaRiviere?
No, I, it was just that donor status that I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Mr. Toyber. Mrs. Patrica.
Yeah, can you go to the slide that talks about what this budget accomplishes? There's a list of things. It's way toward the end. Please, and thank you. Maybe it's above that one. Wait, go back. You were there.
Got this one?
Right there.
Gotcha.
So the third one down, supports the initiatives of the state. Wouldn't it be fantastic if it supported the initiatives of the Lee County School District? It'd be great if this board could get, get us to the point where we're doing what Lee County wants to do instead of what the state tells us to do?
Mm, boy.
That was my little rah rah, let's get it done.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Giannelli?
I just have a brief comment. We advertised this public hearing in several different ways, and this is a big budget, one point five billion dollars, and yet there are no members of the public here to talk. So we must be doing an excellent job in managing our budget because we had no, no comments, and, and so that makes me feel happy. And I do want to say that a one percent increase with the kind of growth and the additional mandates that we have had to deal with year after year is not a very big raise, and I think that we are also doing a great job in meeting the growth needs and the requirements from the state and still having a budget that's essentially the same year after year. So I want to compliment Dr. Atkins and his staff. Dr. Decemore, thank you. And, and all of our staff members in the schools who are doing more with less and doing a really good job educating our kids. So that's all I have to say. Mr. Martin?
I have nothing, thank you.
My, my comment would be that it, first of all, as it relates to the budget, it truly was a team effort, and you all were a huge part of that team and provided input, and as were members of cabinet and, and our entire executive team. We also had a lot of input, even from staff and our community group. So it was really a, a budget where I really felt we had a lot of, of shareholder input, and as a result, I think that's another reason why we had a lot of support for the budget because we had a lot of people that weighed in and saw some of their, some of their initiatives as part of this budget. So having said that, just want to take the opportunity, since we are in a, a public setting, opportunity to communicate. We have made the decision to close schools for Thursday and Friday. We are also canceling after-school activities, including daycare, on Wednesday. This is to give our students, staff, parents, our community time to plan. There's a lot of folks that may be considering leaving the area, and this would give them an opportunity to, to make plans. Also, if those are going to, those people that are going to stay here, also gives them an opportunity to make preparations for their homes. We do anticipate we may see still some impact tomorrow in terms of employees.
Yes.
So our school principals will be working with our team to make sure that we have everything covered in the morning so that we can have a, as normal day as possible. We will be providing updates to our, to our community public on a regular basis. We do plan to meet tomorrow morning at eight fifteen with our leadership team to go over our entire emergency response plan with our school principals and our district directors and so forth, and we'll be continuing to communicate out to schools. There may be the question about what about next week, and that is something we're going to monitor conditions, and we're going to be communicating with our public as soon as possible after we know the, the impact of, of the storm on our particular area. And just so you know, I have been, in fact, may have seen me texting back and forth. We're in communication with some of our member, our colleagues across the state. We do have, I know, Broward, West Palm Beach, Miami Dade, Collier, and our school district are closed Thursday and Friday. Henry County and Glades were considering closing on Friday, and I think now they're considering also looking at Thursday as well. It's something that, that may be coming out in the near future. So, you know, it's something that all of South Florida is, is really trying to focus on, making sure that people are, are safe and as this storm approaches. And that's all that I have in terms of my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. So at this point, having no other business to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned at five forty-four P.M., and we will meet again at six P.M. for our regular action meeting.